...at six P M. on Monday, September eighteenth. Clerk will call the roll.
Anthony Petracca?
Here.
Joe Godozic?
Here.
Alex Apollonia?
Here.
Wayne Miller?
Here.
Item number one, approval of the minutes. If you would review and approve the July tenth meeting minutes. Have we motioned to approve the minutes?
Second motion.
I have a motion by Joe Godozic, seconded by Wayne Miller and Anthony Petracca. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes are approved. Item number two, public hearing, one seventy-five Green Bush Road. The applicant is Brad Brothers L L C. Assesses plat twelve dash two. It's a residential R ten. The applicant is requesting preliminary approval to demolish a single-family dwelling and construct one hundred nineteen unit multifamily residential condominium on a forty-eighth apostle zoned R ten. The proposed development has received a special use permit issued by the zoning board, so I'll just give the board a quick summary of of this project. Way back, May eleventh to two thousand sixteen, the applicant appeared before the planning board for master plan approval. They then went to the zoning board on June twenty-ninth of two thousand sixteen, for a special use permit, which expired on seven thirty-two thousand seventeen. They reappeared before the zoning board in eight thirty-one-two oh one seven and received a special use permit. My understanding is the applicant needed approval from D E M in order for the engineer to review the drawings. And if I'm incorrect on anything, I'll stand corrected if you want to correct me. Is this, uh...
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thomas Cronin, attorney. Don Obrino, Conan Ferrara, ten seventy Main Street, coming to round for the applicant. And Mr. Chairman, that was a correct recitation of the procedural history that brings us here today.
Hi, Mr. Cronin, let me introduce the exhibits. I've marked and they're in the file. Exhibit number one is the application. Exhibit number two is a letter from James Jeremiah dated July eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. Exhibit number three is a letter from Kent County Water Authority dated July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Exhibit number four is a letter from D E M dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, which is an insignificant alteration permit. Exhibit number five is R I H P C, whatever that is, letter dated September thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Number six is preliminary plan, twenty-four sheets. Number seven is a landscape mitigation plan dated September two thousand seventeen. Number eight is parry corp traffic assessment. Number nine is the abutment list. Number ten is the property tax clearance. Number eleven is the public hearing ad, and number twelve are the return of the green cards.
Does he have it correct?
Yes. May I proceed?
You will, you can.
Okay. As you mentioned, we've filed this form for master plan and received approval for one hundred and thirty minutes at one seventy-five Green Bush Avenue, West Wall. And then went to the zoning board for a special use permit, which was granted and then recently renewed. We have for a preliminary approval for the condominium development of one hundred and nineteen units. That's a reduction from the original master plan amount of one hundred and thirty units to one hundred and nineteen units. The... We are not seeking any waivers from the board in this matter. In a condominium use, the minimum density is seventy-five hundred square feet per building. In our ten zone, there's enough area for approximately one hundred and fifty units. All frontage requirements of thirty feet, side requirements of ten, and rear set-offs of thirty feet are met by the plan. The site does have twenty-seven acres of built-up land and a conservation easement and no further development agreement. It will be recorded with the remaining twelve point four acres, which is to the rear of the property from Green Bush Avenue. The area to be developed is the front portion of the property. Just to refresh the board as to the plan, there's a... Condominium units proposed are single family, single-floor units. There'll be single-story buildings. Each building will have two, three, or four units. Each individual unit will have one parking space and a single-car garage. The condominium units themselves is sixty by thirty, containing two bedrooms of approximately eighteen hundred square feet total. There's an aid restriction for the zoning order fifty-five plus that will be developed in the condominium documents when those are done and recorded here in the town, a restriction in that regard. The... Up until that time, we had to be careful in our proposal as we don't want to be discriminatory towards any member of the population, but that's what's proposed. Fifty-five-plus condominiums. The... It's a condominium, but just to go through it quickly, private road to be maintained by a condominium association, snow pond by a condominium association, trash pickup by a condominium association, road maintenance, drainage maintenance, all agreed to be taken care of by the condominium association. Downward lighting is planned, pointing towards the interior of development and away from the exterior portions. There is a single-family home on the building, a single-family home building on the property. Traditionally, these have been offered up to be moved or for firefighter training. You know, if no one takes us off on those offers, it's demolished. It will not remain as part of the project. The public water and public sewer focused Apollonia and Attorney DeFiore, I've already mentioned the approvals from those bodies, as well as D E M has approved the insignificant alteration, as well as the drainage. Preliminary, the proper focus is on the engineering site design and drainage. In that regard, I have two engineers with me this evening, Brian King from Crossman Engineering to talk to you about the site design and drainage, and John Shelton to talk to you about the traffic. If you don't have any questions with regard to my introduction, I'll introduce my first witness. You see?
Any questions?
No questions.
No.
With me here this evening is Brian King, he's a professional engineer from Crossman Engineering. He has testified before this board on prior occasions on land development projects, and I asked him to be qualified as an expert.
Mr. Chairman, he has in the past been qualified as an expert here. Motion by the board to accept him as an expert.
I have a motion to accept the Crossman?
Yes.
As a qualified... How would you... Qualified, uh...
Expert.
Ex- right, expert. Do you raise your right hand, please?
That's what made the motions.
Right.
Motion is made by Joe Godozic to accept, seconded by...
Second.
Can you take the trial to? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you raise your right hand? State your name and your profession and your place of employment.
Brian King, civil engineer, Crossman Engineering.
Swear tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Thank you. Crossman Engineering was hired to do the drainage design and assist with the water and sewer design approvals. We have, as the exhibits for reference, we have received approvals for sewer system. We have received approvals from Kent County Water and also from the D E M. We submitted to D E M for an insignificant alteration permit. We did receive it. For the design, we looked at the existing conditions and prepared those conditions with the proposed development. And I actually have watershed maps here, and I can go through that in a detailed process if you'd like. In general, what we did is we followed the D E M stormwater manual, which is a very strict way to design a stormwater system. We provided water quality. We provided groundwater recharge, which infiltrates water into the ground. We provided peak flow attenuation for a one-year, a ten-year, and a one-hundred-year storm. And then we also have a separate book left that we submitted that requires the orders in the future to do routine maintenance on the drainage system. It's... Would you like me to go through the drainage rule?
Yeah, please, please.
I'm gonna go with the watershed maps. For the existing conditions, we broke the site up into four areas. It is a hill, I guess, if you will, in the center of the site. And everything flows away from the center of the site toward a wetland area or toward abutting properties. What we typically do is we separate a watershed area in wherever direction it may flow. We have a watershed A, which flows to this larger wetland here, which is eventually outlets into the south branch of the Tuxedo River. There's a small little area down by Green Bush that flows to a isolated wetland. Then we have two other watersheds that we analyzed that flow to the east of the property, toward the abutting neighbors. And the goal is to look at the conditions before development and then look at the conditions after development in those same design point areas and make sure there's no increase in flow, make sure that the T E M requirements for water quality and groundwater recharge are met. The water quality that's required is... It's a percentage of the impervious area. This is the layout here. And as we had referenced on the existing, the larger watershed flow toward this wetlands, which is on the west and the southern part of the property. And under post-development conditions, the majority of the site flows that way, too. So what we have done is we have quite a few separate drainage systems that act together and they act also separately. We have separate underground infiltration systems for the rooftop that are shown in these smaller shaded areas. Those are the storm tech units, which are the... They're the yellow chambers. That's installed below the ground in the grass areas. I just want to back up and say, for this design, also soil evaluations were done, test bits. They were done by George Dupont. That was also part of the smelt to D E M, which was part of the review and approval. The soils out here, they vary from a fine, mostly like a fine sand or a gravelly sand, but they were good conditions for infiltration and also for, you know, depth of groundwater was reviewed. Now, as you get closer to the wetlands, the water deepness is a little higher. Before the center, it's much deeper. So the center area where the water table was deeper and the soils were stained red apples, it was actually ideal for an underground infiltration system. So the majority of the rooftops, not every rooftop, but the majority of rooftops drain into those underground infiltration systems. We... And then we broke up this big watershed A into sub-areas where we have infiltration basins off to the south, another infiltration basin in the southern corner, infiltration basins and sand filters. Then we have an underground infiltration system and an underground detention chamber. All of those work together to meet the air regulations. And that's all part of the calculations that we submitted, all part of the calculations that were approved. And as I had mentioned, you know, part of the T E M requirements is a long-term operation maintenance, which is really important for the systems to not only function today, but to continue functioning as designed. It's a pretty detailed document. And D E M now requires that that be recorded in any records. So just to make sure that that is done. So that was done for this exhibit. Also, as a requirement of D E M, to be provided a very detailed soil erosion sediment control document, which is the contract to follow. We have sediment control plans here. We shield perimeter, so fence and waddles and a combination of those things. We have construction entrances. We have even temporary little sediment panries that are used during construction to control runoff and make sure that there's no erosion that goes into the flats. So these plans have been designed, have certified, and have been approved by the D E M for the drainage design.
Could you... Are you able to just point out the conservation easement for the undeveloped land within the D E M wetland? Are you able to just give us an idea what that relates to, or...
Uh... This is a full boundary, yes. It's on this, you know, frame line. That's fine. So, Mr. Apollonia, the proposed... This is wetland right there across the top.
Mm.
And this is the boundary of the property. It's this area as it comes across down that's being proposed. It's conservation easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Board, have any further questions? Mr. King?
Yeah, Brian, that water, that all those basins are gonna be catching all that water. Does that all tie into the sewer system, or does that supposedly get soaked into the ground?
Yeah, today, with that water, it just efferves over land and goes into the wetlands. That's where it would go also. After development, sort of a good portion of it will infiltrate into the ground.
Okay.
Not all of it, but what does not infiltrate, what runs off, actually those flow rates are less than the existing. That was part of the design. Now, there are catch basins that are proposed in the roadway to collect roadway runoff. And those... The runoff that's in those catch basins is directed to those stormwater basins that we designed.
There was mention in here also about the type of pavement, permeable pavement?
Yes. Yeah, there is a small section of the roadway that is a permeable pavement. And the reason for that is the grades on the site were on the lower end and we just couldn't get catch basins there to collect the water and direct it to one of the stormwater areas that we have. So it's the yellow area. It's a couple hundred feet right by the intersection of Green Bush Road, which is a permeable pavement. And that actually is designed in accordance with the D E M requirements. That's a V M P measure where they have... It's actually... It's permeable pavement. Then it's this filter fabric, there's a layer of crushed stone, there's a layer of sand. And the sand actually provides the filtration. And that's at a depth that is... And then the area, the width of the road and the depth that's required for the water quality. And then there's also a crushed stone area below that. It's a multi-layered area that provides detention. The crushed stone is what they call like a reservoir, you know, where it can go. But it's only the roadway, really, and maybe just a little bit.
Just the entrance, more the entrance?
Yeah, it's just that area.
So that has to be treated differently than the rest of the road? That access road, I guess, is what it's gonna be, more or less. Does that get treated differently?
Yeah, there's maintenance requirements. You have to, instead of sweeping it, if the vacuum sweeper, with a vacuum sweeper, just because you don't want to clog the pores.
So that's something that the condo association needs to be made aware of?
That's part of the operation, the long-term operation maintenance plan.
Okay. The letter from the... Letter dated seven eighteen from James Jeremiah does refer to... It is critical that once construction is complete, the homeowners' association complies with maintenance schedules outlined in sheet seventeen to twenty-four. Maintenance of permeable pavement is critical in designing stormwater management plan. Therefore, the planning board should require that the homeowners' association provide the necessary maintenance of the permeable pavement within their organization. So they have it all covered. The... The permit, the permit from West Wall of Sewer, that comes later, correct? West Wall Sewer Department?
I know that we made some smittles to that.
And in technical review, there's a comment... There's a reference in technical review to a landscape burn planted with evergreens in proximity to a budding lot two thirty-four to allow additional screening for the abutting residential dwelling located at one seventy-nine Green Bush.
So I can assist you with that, Mr. Apollonia?
Okay.
Well, along this boundary here, there's... The D E M has requested... Well, not just the D E M, but the D E M has set out some periods along the stone wall that are going to require some berm and some plant. Those are shown on the plan along the stone wall in certain areas. And in addition to this boundary, lot two thirty-four, there's some requiring long care as well on the Nottingham Road street side, for lack of a better term, to protect the wetlands and wildlife from the wetting from the Indian light. The D E M suggests that.
Right.
Or requires that, if they just suggested it, off we would go.
Right.
On this side, it's a good... Yeah. So this is the detail of the plan. There's two significant areas where there's an earthen berm with white pines planted along the top, along that boundary of lot two thirty-four. And then at the corner of the property, where it turns near Mr. Salas's house, there's an extension of an earthen berm with white pines upon that. That's what's specifically mentioned in the T R C notes. On the D E M, on the final plan, they suggested other areas with similar treatment. But this area is mainly for the buffering aspect of it, where the other areas are more to do with the wetland protection. Same engineering concept, just for different reasons. So significant buffering along the entryway and then on the corner near Mr. Salas's house on lot two thirty-four. You can see, this is probably better overall view here, along the entrance and then at the corner. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mark, is there anything else in technical review that...
Everything that was discussed in the technical review committee's been addressed
Okay.
throughout the process and in the plans. All of those requirements were attached as part of the master plan approval and those that are incorporated in the plan are in the plan and those that we continue to be concerned about, we're stipulating on.
So if you could build more units, was the reduction to one nineteen, was it done for a reason, or...
Sure, yeah, yes, of course. Mainly the drainage design, D E M requirements.
Right, okay.
Where Mr. King explained the segmentation of the drainage plan as opposed to one giant retention pond, for lack of a better word. This area was lost, developable areas lost
Right.
in those areas. So, you know, not just this plan, but most plans are finalized in reaction to the D E M requirements, especially as in this case is wetlands on the property.
Any other questions?
If, with the board's permission, I'd like to introduce John Shelton. He's got a traffic engineer. He's also a professional engineer who has testified before the state with God for land development projects and the traffic requirements associated with that. And I asked that he'd be recognized as an expert in that regard.
Could he give us a little bit on the way you testified?
Pretty much every community in Rhode Island. I've been doing traffic works for about thirty years. As I've been in front of planning boards throughout the state of Rhode Island for a wide range of that.
I suggest he'd be accepted as an expert.
And what's the... Do you have a company name?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, it's Par Corporation.
P I?
P A R V.
P A R V.
Yeah, I live in Rhode Island.
Could I have a motion by the board to recognize Par as a qualified...
Expert, when is... Make the motion, yes, first.
Motion is made by Joe Godozic. You have a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Wayne Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you raise your right hand, please? State your name, company, and the occupation.
Yes, John Shelton, Par Corporation, Senior Vice President, Head of Transportation Division.
Swear tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing but the truth.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Board. As mentioned, I worked for Par Corporation. We've been involved with projects since the summer of two thousand fifteen, when Callum Meyer was looking at the proposal. We did a traffic study back in summer. We have a couple different documents, but we did an original traffic study back then. And in September, we were asked to do counts for the school season. We did some adjustments when we had the council summer, but then we actually did more counts in September. So we had that, you know, eyes for that development at that time. And Mr. Boyer, when I came forward with this project, we went ahead and we gave you an assessment letter, basically comparing what this development's gonna be to what that traffic study was, because a lot of it has not changed on the road as far as safety and capacity issues. But we want to take a look at the generations would be for this development for both, uh, versus what was proposed previously. So with our traffic study, we looked at a few different components. We want to look at traffic safety, traffic capacity, to make sure that things are safe on the roadway areas, the study areas. We looked at the adjacent railways from Route Two, you know, along the turnpike, along Green Bush. And so we looked at the safety as far as crash data, and then we also looked at as far as speeds, and we also looked at site distance issues. So we received three years of crash data, which is typically what you obtain in order to see if there's any areas where there's a pattern of crashes in the vicinity based on the three years that we had. You know, we asked if we wanted to plot those, where they're at, and if we find any areas that show that, any patterns of crashes that should be concerns as far as safety concerns. We also want to look at the site distance. You know, one of the important things we want to make sure is that cars can pull safely in and out of the site. So in order to look at the site distance, we did a speed study to see what the cars typically drive at, at the eighth percentile speed, which we signed for. Not the posted speed limit, you know. You have the posted speed limit and the eighth percentile. There's certainly a difference. People typically don't drive the posted speed limit, usually five to ten miles over. But with the thirty-five mile per hour design speed that we use and we're using the American Association of State Highway Transportation Official guideline as far as what you need for proper site distance, we don't pull in and out of the site, we're able, where the driver is located, to be safely to pull out, be able to see up and down the roadways, initiate the pullout safely without causing any concern. So the site distance, we found we're okay in the crash history, was okay as well. As far as capacity, we did some extensive traffic counts at the major intersections. We looked at the peak hours, and those were seven o'clock to nine o'clock in the morning, and then four o'clock to six o'clock in the afternoon. Most typically, the hours of the day where you have most traffic, you're able to do with commuters. We also realized it's a school nearby, so we want to take that into account. So we also extended the count in there in regards to see what the inventory during that, during those times was. We also realized it's a school, uh, nearby, so we wanna take that into account, so we also extended the count in there in regards to seeing what the inventory during that, during those times as well. Um, with accounts, uh, we went ahead, we looked at three different conditions, we looked at what the existing conditions are as of today. Uh, knowingly, when we look at a, a build-out, uh, a development, we wanna see what the capacity of houses could be once the build-out is done. So we extended that out for five years, uh, we took into account in regards to what we call the no-build condition, is the traffic that has not had the volume, is based on this development, but has the volumes that could occur, uh, in the area, it's just natural growth that goes on. Did coordinate with the planning department, uh, as mentioned, there was no significant developments in the area, but we did go ahead and put a conservative, we put a half a percent annual growth on there. Typically, when we look at this census data, it naturally shows a reduction in, in, uh, the population in the area, but we kept it conservative when we added the half percent annual growth over a five-year period, just to show, uh, the growth and what it could be. So we looked at those, we analyzed that for no-build condition, uh, showed no decrease in level of service, uh, and they stopped, it's operated at acceptable level of service. And the big difference that we look at is the no-build five years out and then the build, and with the build condition, that's when we add the traffic volumes, we strip them into the traffic streams based on existing traffic streams. Then we analyze major intersections, and again, looking at the condition from the no-build to the build, uh, we found no decrease in level of services for any of the, uh, turning moments at the major intersections, so. Uh, the capacity based on this development, uh, showed that it was gonna be any significant impact, uh, with this development. We did take a look in regards to just seeing if there is some recommendations for improvements that could help with the traffic flow in the area. Uh, one of the things we noticed possibly, widening Green Bush, or the sun line, uh, straight on there, just to make sure that, you know, the traffic can follow that better. Uh, there is a curve, as you know, uh, adjacent, not too far from the property, we just mentioned with the roadway, the town, they like to sort of point these, uh, Chevron signs, just to make the motorists in the area aware, but, uh, overall, you know, we, we feel comfortable to say that with this development, we don't see any certain impacts with traffic safety in the past, or anything. Any questions?
Any questions by the board?
Okay.
The site distance, how far is that, and what's, what is available on, at that site?
For the design speed, uh, is requirement, I'll be at the numbers, um. So when you're, if you're pulling out of the site and you're looking to the east, the required stopping site distance is twenty to fifty feet, uh, what was measured was three hundred and fifteen feet, and that's for, like you said, thirty-five mile per hour design speed, where it's supposed to be twenty-five. Uh, the intersection site distance is where you're, when you're sitting at the intersection, it's a little bit further back, it's well, quite a seat. It's three hundred and thirty-five feet, and you actually measured three hundred and ninety-five feet. After, we're looking to the west, the requirement is twenty to fifty feet, and you have well over five hundred feet for stopping site distance. And then, uh, the required intersection site dis- is three hundred and ninety feet, and you have measured already, over five hundred feet there or so. Uh, so you so, you do exceed it, uh, by a pretty decent amount.
Good logic, okay.
So, so there's no, there's no issue with, with that en- uh, entrance being so close to the corner? 'Cause it appears very close to the corner.
That, well, actually, with it being in the corner, that helps you see down the roadway.
Oh, oh, okay, that makes sense.
The location, yeah.
I was thinking that it might be a hindrance, but it's, it's actually better.
No, it helps your, it helps your feeling, you know, you're close to that corner, so.
Okay. And also, there was a lot of conversation last meeting about the intersection of, 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 uh, East Crunch Avenue and Route Two, and the issues that occur down there. Was there any considerations, uh, like you said, there's no significant impact, uh, but is there any, uh, plans to, that you know of that you, in your study, that they're gonna be widening that or doing improvements to that? I think that was brought up last time.
Yeah, one of, well, we did, uh, coordinate this with the DOT to see if there's anything that they're gonna be looking at right now, and I know one of the things that they looked at is the signal.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, is, uh, operating properties that we're gonna have some problems with the loop detectors, which affects the timing of the signals, or through our coordination, what they consider they're gonna be going, they're looking, right, and improve the loop detectors, which will help with the timing, get the cycles better in order to keep the traffic flowing.
That's it, that, that's.
That's all they stated right now, if anything, uh, as far as geometric improvements at this time.
It just seemed like it, it would definitely move most people if there was a turning lane, if there was two lanes there at the end, just past the, uh, you know, the funeral parlor.
Right, right, right.
You know?
That's, you know, that's something that, you know, I agree, that that was a, so it would help, and I think it's something that you would want to tell the position.
Yeah. Yeah.
See, they've been on their, their tip with their program as far as improvements.
Okay.
They do have a program where they looked at, yeah, where they look at, uh, um, they'll do studies in intersection if you request, and we do, and find out, uh, uh, the guys of safety, how they improve, then they go into the design, and so.
The town actually did submit a request to the DOT as part of the tip program to look at that intersection and maybe do a realigning and adding a right-hand turn lane.
Oh. Nice. Nice. Okay. Thanks, Mark. Any other questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'm, if, if the board doesn't have any additional questions with regard to the site design for myself or, uh, Mr. Boyer, uh, then I would simply, uh, additionally petition that this board consider, uh, having this matter go to final administratively, um.
Part of the, uh, part of the, uh, public hearing process, we've heard from the, the applicant and experts. During the presentation, public hearing, I should state this earlier so that the public have a clear understanding. We're gonna take public in support, objectors and experts, rebuttal by the applicant, and response by the staff, so if you have, do you have any other experts that you'd like to?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Like to?
I was just gonna say, now, one thing, that the, all of the documents, the condominium documents, and all, all of those documents I have to review before you can go to, uh, any final.
Which, which is the, the homeowners?
The homeowners, the con- what, whatever the condominium is, uh, declaration.
Right.
Bylaws, any of the documents that set up the functioning of the condominium association, I have to review before they can ask for final approval.
Which would be, uh, another meeting?
Well, they're asking that it be done by administratively by Mark, as opposed to coming in for the final.
Oh. Oh.
That's something that's gonna, you decide.
This evening.
Well, what they're asking is that after this hearing is concluded, if this board votes to grant preliminary approval.
Mm-hmm.
The next and last step is final approval. They're asking that, they've presented everything they've got to present, so that instead of them having to come back here for another hearing for the board to grant final approval, they can submit whatever they have to, the documents I review as an example, to Mark, and Mark can give them administratively the final approval.
Be a stipulation. Those doc- those documents, meaning condominium association documents?
That all, that all of the stipulations, if, if the, if the board approves it with all the stipulations that the town, uh, planner has recommended,
Right, okay.
when they come in for final, instead of them having to go down the list with
Again.
the board, they go down the list with the town planner, and the town planner can't approve them.
Right. Okay. We'd like to hear, all would like to hear from any members of the public in support of the project. Any members in support? Any objectors that would like to speak, objectors and experts?
Uh, yes, I represent, uh, Ronald Salas and his wife, uh, who lives in, uh, one seventy-nine, uh, Green Bush Road. Uh, he's on the easterly side of, of the project.
All right, could you state your name and, uh?
I'm pointing, uh, Harry Lucas, uh, Lucas and Lucas, thirty-three College Hill Road, building five, uh, Waldorf.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, I represent, uh, Ronald Salas, who, uh, resides at one seventy-nine Green Bush Road, which is on the easterly side, uh, of the proposed, uh, project.
Which, which lot is that? Do you know, do you have the lot number by any chance? That's all we have, is lots.
I think two thirty-four.
It's two thirty-four.
Two thirty.
Two thirty-four.
Yeah, lot two.
Two thirty-four.
Thank you.
Page, page three.
Mr. Salas is, uh, concerned, uh, two four, one is the runoff of the proposed proj- project, which is on the eastward side. He wants to ensure there's no additional runoff. Uh, most of the testimony from the engineers seem to relate to the westward side, which was a concern of, uh, DEM. There's also a pond located, uh, on, uh, Mr. Salas's, uh, property that is, uh, fed by, uh, the property, which is a site of the condominium association. So he is, uh, concerned about, uh, the runoff and what feeds that into the pond on his, uh, property. Uh, additionally, he's very concerned about the buffer zone. It appears by the plans that there's only a ten-foot buffer zone between his property and the driveway in his, uh, house. The proposal calls for apparently a little war with, uh, um, earth, I think white pines, uh, they didn't indicate the height of the pines that would be located there when they were initially planted. I think the, the plans called for, uh, thirty feet, of what would be the initial height of the white pines, and would they run the entire length of his property? But ten feet is not a sufficient buffer zone, uh, for his property. He would need more than ten feet, he would like a hundred and fifty feet, which is probably something that's not feasible. Uh, but certainly ten feet, I, I would, I would, uh, submit to the board that some additional buffer zone should be provided, uh, for Mr. Salas and his property. And also ensure that the white pines are initially planted, I, I wouldn't want them, uh, ten inches, uh, it takes, uh, fifty years for them to grow. Uh, they should be ten to twelve feet when they're initially planted, in order that they would, uh, provide additional water. It'll also would help the drainage, you know, in terms of, uh, the white pine. So those would be his concerns, and that would be his proposal, that we increase the buffer zone, we ensure that the white pines that are planted run the entire length of his property, and that initially, they're at least ten to twelve feet when they're initially planted. Uh, if you have any questions, I have full authority for Mr. Salas to negotiate with any other body in the board.
Now, do we, uh, do we wanna take these individually, allow the applicant to respond individually, or here everyone in?
Whatever the, however the board wants, yeah.
Would the, would the board have any objection if we allow the applicant to respond to the individual objectors?
No, not at all. Just to respond.
I'll say, uh, so, uh, initially, a, a couple of the concerns can be, uh, cleared up just based on the plan. The, uh, the, the white pines planted on top of the earthen berm, six feet, uh, that's the DEM requirement, they'll be six feet high.
Six feet high?
Six feet high on top of the berm, uh, that, that's the answer to that question. And the, uh, the ten-foot, uh, space a- along the property lines conforms with the, uh, West Wallack. It's only code, this plan was developed with, with the code in mind, so that no, uh, variances or waves would, would be required. And, uh, that's the basis of, uh, that, uh, decision, and, uh, finally, the, as we noted earlier, the, um, DEM has, uh, made specific requirements as to the plantings and, uh, where they're located, uh, both on Mr. Salas's boundary and, uh, around the wetland, and obviously with the full intention of, uh, complying with those requirements. Um, so in addition to that, I'll have Mr. King, uh, address the, uh, easterly side, uh, drainage issues. More fully, let's say.
Thank you.
You are still under oath.
Uh, Brian King from Boston Engineering, the, uh, the analysis of the existing conditions and the post-development conditions included the entire site, uh, flow that went in all directions, including eastward direction. Um, we designed a system that conforms to the DEM regulations, um, not increasing the flow to that area, providing the proper water flow and groundwater recharge, um, it was designed with the standards that, that were set. We don't foresee any adverse impacts, uh, occurring to that property or any properties, um, with, with the system, uh, that was designed. Uh, you know, as long as the system is maintained as, as, um, ripped down, we intend it.
But do I, but is, do you know this height of the berm, the earth berm, along the property lot or along the buffer zone?
I know that, um, you know, that was noted on the plans, uh, behind the berm, so, so that was accepted. Um, DEM's concern, you know, is the, uh, the, the wetlands as well.
Yeah.
So I know that they, they did approve the, um, the repetitive plantings and the size, and I think the size of, well, actually, it's a common size.
And we're just guessing, three, four feet for the?
The berm, the berm's three feet.
Berm, three trees, yeah, it just, just can't really, I'll be sorry.
Typical.
I mean, you, you want it to, to be able to grow, Tom.
Yeah, I see further up on that easterly side, it's, uh, on the, uh, page, uh, sheet five, that there is, um, six-foot avevita planted on top of the berm.
Right, that's, that's the, uh.
So they're gonna be six foot.
Six foot high.
Six foot high, and avevita can grow as high as twenty-five, thirty feet.
Yeah, they, they probably grow, uh.
Sixty and top of the three-foot berm.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll be at least nine feet when they're, when the berm and the way to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the, uh, Mr. Salas realizes that, uh, the requirements of the ten-foot are according, uh, the, uh, appropriate ordinances that we were, his concern is his property and the aesthetic impact that this project will have on it. That's the reason he feels, ten feet, it is a minimum, there's no question about it, we're, we're not challenging that, and we know they have the right to do it. What Mr. Salas said, the question, the board taking into consideration, this is his property, it was, he had, they had to go to the zoning board to get this exception, and now he is also concerned about the aesthetic value and the impact on his property. And I, and I would ask that the board take that into consideration, uh, when they, uh, approve the plan. Ten feet is minimum, we understand that, but we would like a larger buffer zone, and we would like, uh, the white pines to initially be before.
Ju- just for the board's knowledge, when they went before zoning, because they did not, they met the minimum standards, zoning had no authority to say it has to be more than ten feet, so if anybody on the board wonders why zoning didn't take that into consideration, zoning had no authority to do so, that's a matter of your, your, your discretion, not, not the zoning boards.
I, I agree with that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, your, your.
Mr. Cronin, on, on, on the issue of the, the height of the, uh, buffer, how long does, how long does it take one of those trees to go from six to ten? Does anyone have?
So, Mr. Chairman, I grew up in some, uh, on the backs, on the backside of Rattler, and I, I do not know the, uh, uh, I, I mean, I, I think generally they, they choose plantings that are indigenous, that grow well, uh, will thrive even in the face of deer, uh, that, you know, that, those are the, the things that we're shooting for, that'll fill out, um, but these are the general concepts that they look for, I can't really speculate as to how quickly you would reach the height of say ten feet. I, I'm sorry, I, that's a little outside my area, oh, and I apologize that I don't have any really good answers to that question. Uh, one, one final comment, if I may rebuttal, uh, to, uh, Mr. Salas's request, is that, uh, although, although, uh, Mr. Salas's driveway is, uh, is that, uh, although, although, uh, Mr. Salvis's driveway is, uh, close to the boundary, very close to the boundary between these two properties, it, it, his house itself is at a minimum of a hundred and forty feet from, you know, the, the pines that were just planted and planted. And, uh, you know, go, one corner, a hundred and forty feet, you know, a hundred and ninety feet. And, uh, you know, there's additional room on his property to plant, you know, buffers and things like that, which we're willing to, you know, supplement what's there or move what's there. But as far as changing the buffer, this is a DEM approved plan, uh, any change in, in that, that kind of change, uh, would, would be like de facto denial. Send us back, uh, to the DEM with the new set of plans before you with the new set of plans, uh, are on, you know. So, um, I'd like to the board to consider that and make a decision.
The, the home, the home is, how far would you estimate the home is, is away from?
Hundred and forty.
Do it.
According to, according to, uh, that, that's a, uh, that's a, a pace-off amount that's from the plans. Thank you.
Good.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, if with your indulgence, uh, Mark Boyer, registered surveyor, uh, write off some more information, response. Thank you.
Absolutely.
State your name, profession, occupation.
Mark Boyer, professional land surveyor, and also a member of Brad Brothers.
Raise, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. I just wanted to clarify one thing regarding the buffer. The buildings along the Salvis property line are not ten feet off the property line, they're closer to thirty feet off the property line. I just wanna make sure everyone understands that. And that the berm that we're talking about, the tree we planted on, is only at that spot where the buffer is by Mr. Salvis's property. The trees that are lined from these, uh, from Green Bush Road not belong to his property line, those will just be white pines. If those will not, I'll propose to be on a berm. I just wanna clarify about the buffer, make sure everyone doesn't think the building is ten feet off the property line.
Do you, did you, did you wanna?
Well, it would be, uh, all, all of his property, not only his house, his property that he's enjoyed and has had for, for many years. And he is concerned about the aesthetic value of all of his property, not only where, uh, his structure. He uses and enjoys all of his property. And he feels there should be more, uh, buffer zone between the condominium project and his property line, the minimum requirement by, uh, board. And, uh, the board can't approve a larger, uh, or a buffer zone. And I would, uh, request you take that into consideration before your decision. Thank you.
Are there any other, uh, any other objectors? Any other objectors? Any other one, any other comments or objections to the applicant? Yes, sir. Please come forward, please come forward, yes.
My name is Royon Venter, I live on Green Bush.
Would you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yep, well, I know. I'm just concerned about what the impact is gonna be on Green Bush Elementary School. A couple of things were said. Yes, it's fifty-five plus, but as we know, a lot of children today live with their grandparents. That's just the way it is. And also the impact is, what's gonna happen if people say, oh, wait a minute, I'm forty, why, why are you discriminating against me? I wanna have children there too. So I'm just curious, just, um, what the impact is gonna be on the elementary school, if that's been considered.
Well, I would leave it up to Mr. Cronin, but the fifty-five and older has to be set up accordance with federal law. And whatever the federal law guidelines are, that's what they have to maintain. I'm not positive of this. I think the only way somebody under fifty-five can live there is if they were the spouse of somebody who purchased at fifty-five and that person passed away. I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert on that, but I believe that's the only way somebody under fifty-five can live there. I don't, I don't know about grandchildren. I don't, I don't think they're allowed, but I don't know. But it's, it's by whatever the, the discrimination question that you raised, that's strictly governed by federal law.
So it's open for interpretation?
I think all laws are.
There you go.
It sounds, it sounds like it could be, should be minimal then. If, if there would be a few, couple of exceptions at best, it sounds like it would be a minimal impact to me.
Well, my daughter's considering moving into the area. She's actually very much concerned, considering it. And my granddaughter was not able to get into Green Bush because it's so overloaded as, as a kindergartner. So I, I'm speaking from a little bit of experience.
A- as far as an impact on a grammar school, my experience with fifty-five and older communities, it won't, it should not have any.
And, and the concern again is the, the traffic. I, I live on, I see people, they don't travel twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, thirty-five, with all due respect, sir. Um, they drive a lot faster than that, a lot faster. So I'm just concerned it's an additional impact of a lot more vehicles on the road. It's just, I don't know. Just speaking as a concern.
Mr. Chairman, just to address the school issue, um, when this project was before the planning board master plan approval, there was some information provided and there was some counts regarding similar projects in different communities. And the average, um, student population per unit was point zero six for a project of this type, not restricted fifty-five and over. So if you take that point zero six, you multiply it by the number of the one hundred and nineteen units, you're looking at about seven students in an unrestricted development. So the fact that this is restricted would probably reduce that to close to zero. Just to address that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
Mr. 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 Shovlin, uh, respond to the traffic comment very briefly.
Please do so.
Again, John Shovlin, Park Corporation. Um, so as I mentioned before, we did do a speed study and, you know, we're, we're looking in regards to what you do for the speed study, you get speeds for traffic heading both eastbound and westbound. And looking at the results from that speed study, it's at the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, you know, we found to be, actually, I think it was like thirty-three miles an hour, but we're on the, the thirty-five. Just looking at some of these, there was, there was one that was forty-one. Uh, there, and there was one that was thirty-six, but everybody else was thirty-five. And, and well, does somebody go at a time when we weren't out there? Or, you know, we try to stay hidden so people aren't reducing their speed or anything else. There's there times when somebody goes, you know, forty, fifty miles an hour. And you see that everywhere on any road, but, you know, we try to do a study, try to go ahead and get some true numbers as far as how traffic typically happens. And, uh, within our, within your report, you can see in the appendix as far as results of the, uh, the speed study. And, you know, for the most part, the, you know, volumes were, you know, anywhere between twenty-five, thirty-five. There's a couple of exceptions with the, with the numbers we got, but not in that.
That, that, that study, that, what, what is the duration of a, of a study? Is it several months or is it a year or?
No, I mean, we do the study, you know, a couple of times in regards to, uh, seeing what the speeds are. So we'll go out there and usually what you do is you try to get forty vehicles in each direction.
Right.
In order to get a good sample size. So that's what it is. So we went out there at different peak times and see, uh, some of the, what we had, so.
Those were peak times.
Uh, yeah. Well, these were, uh, this one that I have in front of me, I'm trying to think, it was, it was probably like about ten o'clock in the morning or so, um, that we, that we got the volumes, uh, so. I, what we wanna do is not, we don't wanna get them, you know, we wanna get a normal time call. So it's only to go out there at, uh, you know, late at night or anything else.
Right.
You know, so we went there in the typical travel times of the day. Uh, peak times, a lot of times will slow down traffic because you have more cars out there. So that's what we don't do in between seven and nine. We try to get it where it's, it's not peak and it's more of a free flow, regardless of how people drive.
That's, so that's acceptable to the D O K, that, those, those, those times?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other objectors that would like to be heard? Yes.
Please state your names and address.
Key, thirteen street, two twenty Green Bush Road.
Justin Benzreini, two twenty Green Bush Road as well.
Raise, raise your right hands. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Um, we're also concerned about the traffic. Um, I know we talked about the speed and stuff like that. Uh, we are new residents as of April and, um, I mean, the traffic is already pretty bad. Um, when you're waiting at the light to turn on to East Greenwich Ave that connects to Green Bush Road, um, you can sometimes wait at that arrow. It turns green twice and you still haven't made it through. Uh, I also work from home a couple of days a week, so my office, my home office points right out onto Green Bush Road and there's traffic all day long, especially, you know, around three o'clock, early in the morning, the normal traffic hours, but.
And I'm a morning commuter, so I'm there, um, hitting that light right there where East Greenwich Ave touches, uh, Route Two over there. Take a right at that light, tried to wait at the light, you know, two, three times for the turnover. Um, and I say that the car is probably back up past that business on the right, Astronova. They, uh, go far past that on the right over there. And by adding a hundred and nineteen extra units with, not saying, you know, all of them are working, a lot of them may be retired by that time, but that is going to add more traffic there. And it's gonna slow down our commute time and just, uh, kinda change up our whole.
And with the condos already at the beginning of East Greenwich Ave, um, I mean, just people turning out of there, there's traffic, I mean, it just builds up.
I just wanna say that we are investing our time, uh, and money into this area and, um, we're just concerned that it's going to decrease our property value. And as young investors, that means a lot to us. And, um, we just don't wanna see something that we spend so much money and time on go to waste because, uh, you know, an investment wants to be made on an area to make money.
And we consider this part of West Warwick, um, probably the nicest part of West Warwick. We looked, we were looking at houses for probably over a year before we ended up here. And we love the area a lot. And we just don't wanna see it change dramatically, especially because we just moved here and we're really excited about this area and having a family here one day and things like that. So we just don't wanna see it drastically changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, any other objectors that would like to be heard?
Just two quick questions.
State your name and address.
Roger Richards, junior, one, cause Pauline, West Warwick.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. I just have a question for the developer. Do you guys have, uh, a certain amount of buyers already that are screaming for these over fifty-five condos? I mean, I see two other developments going on in this town right now, uh, up on Lake Fields Street. I mean, these things selling off like what the housing market was. I mean, are they gonna sell? I mean, that's one concern. I mean, what's gonna happen, you know, before you break, um, you have a list of people who says, you know, they're coming to you. Are you gonna, you know, wait for some amount of people for the deposit before you break down?
We have to, we have to wait till it, they're just.
I mean, just for, you know, um, the other concern is, I have a lot of friends and they, they don't believe this is West Warwick. I mean, they, um, say it's not, but they're like, oh, this is West Warwick. And I know I've heard the last thing's been going on for two years, a lot of you guys know. You know, one of the biggest concerns that council has been, we can't afford another hundred more kids in the school district. Can't put sixty houses over there that can sell for two fifty and probably the town get five, six grand in taxes. Um, I don't know, just off the record, just wanna bring up a, you know, idea. Is the Lipit Mill project, is that really going through? Just wanna know if you guys know about that? Just wanna compare something.
Yes, the Lipit Mill project is, uh, has permits pending and is.
So that's gonna be about sixty-plus units?
That is, uh.
I just pulled some data off, if you want.
Yeah, I think it's around sixty to eighty units. Those are.
Eighty restricted?
No, but they are, they are, um, affordable units.
Okay, so affordable. So that means that's, they're gonna bring a hundred and thirty, probably a hundred-plus kids in the district, in the West Warwick school system. I mean, the point is.
Unfortunately, you know, that has not.
I know, it does in a way because if, if somebody was to buy this and put sixty houses there, that'd be a hundred more kids than my, my kids could play with in the Green Bush district. That's all I'm gonna say. I mean, you know, isn't that gonna cost the town money either way? Seven, you know, seven hundred grand a year? That's just my point. I mean, you know, and family, you know, I'm, I mean, I joke about it, but I say I'm on a five-year plane now, you know, depending how things go, you know, with the school system, as a young father, you know, with two kids. That's just my point I wanna make. You know, I like how I live. You know, I got one of the busiest streets and I'm also, you guys all know, we're all developing another issue up in the back of Western Coventry on Door Bridge. You know, the one that, that, we don't know what's going on with that. The last time I talked to, uh, John DiMico was, was a meeting or ten, I think, this month or the end of this month or next month. So we all have another issue going on right now, unfortunately. That's all I have to say. I mean, I just, you know, wish that we were developed with a, with all houses I could ask in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, in rebuttal, uh, we presented a real estate expert to this board in, into zoning, uh, this board master plan and zoning and, uh, special use permit. And, uh, Ms. Patricia, Ms. Patricia testified that the values of these condominiums would be the same or greater than the surrounding homes, that they would have no detrimental effect on the values of the property. And, uh, to answer his direct question, that there was indeed a strong market for this type of condominium, uh, which is evidenced by other area condominiums of this type, uh, selling out at a rapid rate, uh, and drawing a lot of, uh, interest. So, uh, that's not my testimony. I was the testimony, Ms. Patricia, uh, at earlier hearings on this topic, and I rely upon it now. Thank you.
I think there's, I think there's been other condos, both low-rise and high-rise, and apartments in that area. And I, and I don't recall those properties having an adverse effect on property values, as well as other similar properties in Coventry that have been built. And I don't recall an adverse effect on nearby home values. In some cases, they've actually added to or improved the area. So I really would not be able to accept the argument that the construction of this development is gonna have an adverse effect on property values. I, I think if it did, we would take, we would know that, we would take a real hard look at it. And I'm fairly certain that with the quality of the construction, it probably will not, based on what real estate experts have said. Are there any other objectors that would like to speak?
Motion to close the public hearing.
With no other objectives, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion is made by Anthony Petracca, seconded by Joe Godozic. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before the board votes, I would like to add a stipulation, which was an oversight on my part with regard to the traffic report. And I would like that stipulation to say that developer shall incorporate the recommendations of the traffic report, including restriping of lanes along Green Bush Road and horizontal curvature warning signs as part of this project development.
And you will, uh, you will add that in?
I will, if the board so sees fit.
Restriping of lanes on?
Restriping of lanes along Green Bush Road, rounding the horizontal curve where the site driveway will be located, and the addition of horizontal curvature warning signs such as chevrons or advanced curvature signs. That is on page nineteen of the traffic report. That was an oversight on my, that part. I should have included that in the original recommendation.
Felix, Felix, it should be a, a motion to approve, approve preliminary plans with the original stipulation. Uh, once that motion is made and seconded, then a motion to amend as requested by the town planner. A vote on the motion to amend and then a vote on the original motion with discussion actually before the votes.
Okay, we're in the, uh, sec, the part of the public hearing where, uh, any further discussion by the board? The, uh, board has the opportunity to discuss the facts as to whether the standards have been met and whether any condition should be imposed if the relief request is approved. Any other?
No more comments.
Concerns, comments? Wayne? and whether any condition should be imposed if the relief request is approved. Any other...
No more comments.
Concerns, comments? Wayne?
Well, I don't know. I just, I feel that, I, I live in that area as well. I live on Longbow Drive and I, I just hope that down the road that, you know, that there is something done at the intersection of East Greenwich Ave and Route Two. And I, you know, Mark's comments about that, it's a process. It's a, it's a, I know that DOT process takes a little time, but it sounds like it's gonna be something that'll be taken care of and the fact that the, the lights are gonna be corrected. Hopefully they'll monitor the amount of cars that are sitting there. Maybe something will be done to compensate for the amount of cars that are sitting there waiting. Except, you know, with, with, obviously there's, the people on Route Two take preference. I understand that as to, you know, the volume, the volume that's coming. But, you know, we've, we've heard all the experts. They've, they seem like they've done all the, the traffic studies and the drainage concerns, which are the major things. And, I mean, I think it's gonna be a nice development and just, I think it's gonna work out. I think that's how I feel.
Any other comments? You know, on the, on the concern of the buffer, the residential house is located over a hundred forty feet away. The project does meet the requirements of the ordinance. You know, I, I can understand where they're, as the attorney said, they'd like to have a hundred fifty feet. I'm not quite following what that meant. But I think in light of the fact that we, that the applicant has met the ordinance, asking for, and, and Mr. Boyer indicated the structure is thirty feet away. So the structure is, you know, I, I know we're talking ten feet, but the structure's thirty feet away. So realistically, there, there is a little bit more. But I, I don't think we're in a position to turn the project away on the basis of not enough buffer. I think if we, if there was more land, that would allow it. But, I mean, the gentleman's house is around a hundred and forty feet away. It's my opinion. Any other comments? With no other comments, is there a motion? Upon completion of discussion, is there a motion made and seconded?
I'll make a motion to approve.
That would be a motion to approve with the original stipulations previously approved.
Correct. That's still stated.
The motion is made by Joseph Gardozic for the original...
The, the, as originally stated with the stipulations. And the town planner will take care of the language.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Wayne Miller.
Now a motion to amend with the additional stipulation presented by the town planner.
The, the, the motion to amend based on town planner Mark Carulo's reference to restriping the lines and the, the other items that have to be installed on the horizontal curvature. Mark, could you just read it, read it into the record so we cover it, please?
I'll read both. Restrike the lanes along Green Bush Road rounding the horizontal curve where the site driveway will be located and two, add horizontal curvature warning signs such as chevrons or advanced curvature signs.
I'll make a motion to amend the original as stated.
Motion is made, motion is made to amend. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Wayne Miller.
All in, all in favor of the motion to amend?
All in fo, all in favor, do I, do I need a roll call vote or just a voice vote?
Roll call.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote, Wayne?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Joseph?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Motion to approve the, the original as amended.
I'll say thank Wayne.
Roll call.
Sure.
Roll call vote, Wayne?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Joseph?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Anything else?
Preliminary plans approved.
On the issue of final, you know, administrative approval?
That would, that's strictly described, the, the board would have to make a motion to...
The, the attorney is requesting that we grant the applicant...
I'll make a motion to approve administratively.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Wayne Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
I'll take the vote.
Thank you.
Did they? No, I didn't notice. I haven't gone that way yet.
Okay, next item, next item on the agenda, item number three. The amendment to the town zoning order, section five point three one, wind energy conversion systems. Five point one seven wind energy conversion systems, WCS. By repealing the section, the set section in its entirety and adopting a new section, five point one seven wind energy systems and five point two one green renewable or alternative energy installations and facilities.
Okay, this, this is zoning ordinance, so a recommendation has, this, this is coming up before the council tomorrow night. The planning board has to make a recommendation favorable or unfavorable to the council. Background, for those who are not aware of it. When, trying to think of his name, was town planner. He drafted a wind energy ordinance.
Malovich?
Malovich, Bob Malovich. Subsequent to that, town manager Presley came to me and he asked me to draft a green ordinance. Unfortunately, I did not take into consideration that we had a wind ordinance. Now, my green ordinance was all encompass, wind, solar, whatever. When the last wind energy proposal came before planning and zoning, there were some problems because we had two ordinances and parts of the ordinances were conflicting. That went, the zoning board, zoning board denied that application. It went to the Superior Court. The Superior Court threw the case out because the applicant was late on its filing. So that application was thrown out by the Superior Court. We sat around, Mark and I drafting some stuff, but it never getting very far. And concern, there was concerns that if somebody else applied for a new wind energy system, we'd be back in the same spot we were in prior. So, and Mark and my recommendation, the town council placed a moratorium on all wind energy systems until December thirty first. That is presently in effect. Subsequent to that, they, the council asked me to, to put something together to get, get ourselves in a, so that when applicants came, would come in, we would have something. In my preparation for the ordinance that is before you tonight, I began there originally, I wanna say two thousand and five, the Office of Energy Resources put out a guidelines and they revised it in two thousand and sixteen. That was my basic document, what the state site, wind citing resources had suggested. In addition, some time ago, the, oh, then, in addition to what the state was recommended, I did research on all of the local Rhode Island municipalities who have wind ordinances and found out what, what their thoughts were. That became difficult because Little Compton has a different problem than West Warwick does and East Greenwich has a different problem than Central Falls. So, but I, I got a gist of what all the, the wind ordinances were. Through Mark's assistance, we found out that the city of Warwick had had a study done on where, where wind energy systems in that city should be placed. The company was a company called Weston and Sampson. I spoke with the gentleman who prepared it and I got one heck of an education from him. Realistically, I, I don't know how economically these can be done, but I got a tremendous education from him. And then what I did was Mark supplied me with all kinds of maps, zoning maps, land use maps of the town of West Warwick. So I, I looked at those trying to find areas that would, that I thought, you know, no, no, nothing with any education, but that I thought would give some openness to where, where this was. The two areas that popped out right off the bat were residential R ten and the bill, the business park. And I then got to work at drafting the ordinance. What I did in my drafting process was I started out by saying, okay, what's the approval procedure gonna be? So I decided, and again, accept the fact that this started out as my decisions from my research. There, there is no such thing that you can pick up a, go to a book and get a form, wind ordinance. So with taking stuff from all of these, I decided that the first step should be, the application should be made to the town planner. Same way you would an application for site plan review. Town planner would review, huh?
Always. Always goes to the planner.
Yeah, that, that goes to the planner. Town planner then has forty-five days in which he puts a report together of his opinion on it. When that report gets filed, filed favorable, unfavorable, whatever the, the report is, the applicant at that point in time submits to the plant, to the zoning board for a special use permit. And the guidelines that they have to follow are spelled out by statute and by ordinance. The detail of what I have set down for submission this time around is extreme. We've talked about, they've, they've gotta come in with expert, I'll say testimony or documentation, that the foundation is sufficient, that the, that the flicker from the fan, that that's not gonna bother anybody, expert testimony, the noise. So that the amount of documentation that they have to submit first to the planner and then to the zoning board, I tried as I could to cover everything so that when it gets into the boards, they have all of the information. The board has to follow the, the state standards on whether it approves or not. I went on to, at some point in time, maybe the thing is no longer gonna be used, the dismantling of it, set that whole procedure up, the bonding, that, that, I put all of that in, into my ordinance. I tried to make it as detailed as I could. Out of an abundance of caution, I personally think that John Bonero is one of the foremost zoning and planning attorneys in the state of Rhode Island. I asked him for favor. I asked him to review the ordinance on the other side, that he's representing, as though he was representing an applicant to come in. And he reviewed it and he was completely satisfied. He felt that we had covered all bases to protect both sides, the town and its residents, and put a, put together reasonable ordinance. The only change he suggested that I followed through was I had not included the CI district. And he said, you know, there may be a business that wants to come in and put its own. So we added that in so now it could go in a, in an R ten zone, a CI zone or the business park. The, the ordinance, based on the municipalities I read, the guidelines, I know Felix is one who's had, in the past, had great concerns about fall zones and setbacks. It is pretty standard that from the research and that there's very little factual information because there really hasn't been any evidence of blades flying off or towers falling over. So the general feeling on that was the fall zone of a, the tower, pl, a hundred and fifty percent. So if you, and I'll make it, if you got a two hundred foot tower, it's a three hundred foot fall zone. The other thing that we, that I did was the setback from the location of the turbine, there has to be two hundred percent, so if it's a two hundred foot tower, four hundred feet to the property boundary line, four hundred feet to any off-site roadway. And in addition, no occupied building within that. You know how you, after you've noticed, everybody within two hundred feet? No occupied building within that two hundred feet. So I, I think we have, we've tried to cover, after John gave it to me and we, we sat down, made some changes, and then sat down with Mark and he and I, he went through it very thoroughly. I've been through it very thoroughly. And I, in all honesty, if, I don't know what else could be done in, in this. I, I personally feel that it is, it is as thorough an ordinance as there is in the state of Rhode Island.
So where we refer to fall zone for wind turbines measured at ground level below the center of the wind turbine as a circular area with a radius of a hundred fifty percent of the MTH meaning maximum tip height. So that means something with four hundred feet to the maximum tip height, a hundred fifty times four hundred is six, is six hundred feet from...
From the center of the tower.
From the center of the tower to an occupied building.
Yeah.
That's, that's an occupied, that's an, if there's another building on the same site, it's, it's six hundred, in that case, it'd be six hundred feet from, from an occupied building on the, on the same site. Now, where you talk about two hundred percent of the maximum tip height from the site possible property lines. So that, that turbine is on, is on a site in Asprey. It's, it's two hundred percent from, from the turbine or from the property line?
You start, you start at the turbine.
Yeah.
You go out two hundred percent to the property line. And then from the property line, you go out two hundred feet for occupied building. For setback, not fall zone.
Right, so it's, so if you have a four hundred foot...
If you have a four hundred foot tower,
Yeah.
you're gonna have eight hundred... You're gonna have eight-hundred feet to your boundary. And then you're gonna have two-hundred feet for occupied buildings.
So you have to be, you have to be eight-hundred feet from your property line?
Hmm.
Is that cool? So, so that's gonna dictate a, a, a minimum size. You're not gonna put these on small pieces of property?
Absolutely not. That, one of, one of the major concerns that I had when looking at particularly the land use maps. It wa- it was, you know, I thought I knew West Warwick, but there, there's realistically, the area, there's areas in the village, business park. There's areas, and I'm not getting into whether or not a wind turbine down by the Patuxa River will work. I'm just talking about areas where a wind turbine has the room, okay? There's room from the high school down to the river. And then there's room, if, in the Natick area, going up the north side of the Patuxa River, getting up to Midville. And then going up towards the golf courses. Those are realistically the only very large open areas in the town. You know, so, the fact of the matter is that, uh, one of the big problems with wind energy. Was the size of the tower that, that people were objecting to. That's where, where, and if you'll notice, there's, in the ordinance, there's two types of towers. And I'll call one the commercial and one the, the non-commercial. I think that this ordinance is clearly geared so that if we had some company that wanted to go in and generate its own electricity. It's got a much smaller tower, will do the job. It's, it's, and, and we need the protection from the commercial. So, you know, I, I don't know what, what to say, other than, I'm satisfied. I think Mark is satisfied with the, the ordinance, and I know John Bernero is.
So it's, it's, it's two-hundred percent from the site property lines and two-hundred percent.
Oh, two-hundred feet.
It says, two-hundred percent of the MTH from the site parcel property lines and two-hundred percent of the MTH. From any public or private roadway not located on the site parcel.
Yeah.
And from any occupied building located within one-thousand-foot radius.
Well, that's, we, we changed the one-thousand to two-hundred. The one thou- the one thousand, I started out with one-thousand.
That's changed to two-hundred?
That's two-hundred, because the two-hundred, in, in all, in all your notice, uh, and, and frequently zoning people and, and planning people will refer. To the two-hundred foot, when, when somebody comes in to, for, to put in a swimming pool in the setback. They're gonna notify everybody within two-hundred feet of their radius. It's not, some people call it the protective area, some people call it the notice area. So basically, I, I, I felt, well, if you've got a house in that notice area, we're gonna protect you that the, the setback. Protect, your occupied house, yeah. Those things, I, I will, you know, be very honest. A lot of that, that, there's, there's no right or wrong. After the last time around, when there was so much concern about, uh, about fall zones. I tried to come up with, there's just nothing definitive on fall zones, because there's nothing that says a tower fell. Okay, you can't find anything.
Saltie Bryant Beach.
Well, but I, I, but that, I could.
Last year.
Well, I didn't find it, but in gen- in general, you know, so, when I, when I started, the one hundred and fifty percent. Was pretty standard that, you know, if you got a one hundred and fifty feet, a- and that's, that's just the fall zone for occupied. Then you put your setback, which is even more so, or, you know, I, a lot of it is opinion.
I mean, some of the other states we've seen, uh, and, and when I say we've seen. Obviously, reading stuff on the internet, you see some two-thousand feet, fifteen-hundred feet.
Yeah, but you, you also have to look at the area, Felix. Two-thousand feet in Iowa, in the fi- Iowa farmland.
Right. Now, one of the things I did find, some of the manufacturers of these wind turbines, on their safety. And some of their published safety guidelines, where they've stated, if something goes wrong. Or if there's a problem, they suggest that you be X number of feet away. That X number of feet may be greater.
Well, in, in, in the, in the, in the stuff that they have to produce, they have to get all, they get a bunch of stuff from the manufacturer.
Right, but if there's a case where a manufacturer, the manufacturer's safety guidelines.
Do you like?
Exceeds, exceeds these distances, I.
Peter's never gonna let, Peter's never gonna let them go with the, the lesser distance.
But can, but can we have something in here that states if a manufacturer's?
That, it's up to the zoning board. I, I don't wanna get into putting a lot of variables in. The zoning board can, can impose stricter.
Right, Mark, you, you don't, you don't, you, I don't know if you've seen that, but I've seen a few manufacturers where.
I, I haven't seen it, Felix, but based on our conversation earlier, I, and I had, Felix and I had this conversation a little bit earlier. I said that if you wanted to use amending language, you could use the language whichever is greater, I guess. If there, if a manufacturer recommended a greater fall zone than our ordinance includes, which. I mentioned was unlikely.
Well, I, I mean, I, I do recall seeing some manufacturers state in writing.
Uh, uh, let me put it this way. If the planning, if the planning board tonight said, we give a favorable recommendation, but we also recommend that there be a further amendment. Only because this has been advertised three times, and it's going before the council tomorrow night. I would suggest that, that type of an amendment, that, let's get this in place and then go in with an amendment to it. I, I am, my concern on that is, i- is, uh, not that great. And I'm not saying this to pat Mr. Calhoun on the back, but when he comes into the meeting, he's read everything in there. He's, he's got, he knows every detail in it. And if we get some, some applicant who comes in, and Peter has read that the manufacturer wants a three-hundred, three-hundred percent. Believe me, I respect him for the, the amount of homework he does when he comes to a meeting. And I have confidence that something like that coming out of a manufacturer would never get through the zoning board.
Yeah, well. Respectfully, Pete won't be on the zoning board forever.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, so that, and we, I'm just saying, I wanna get this in place.
Yeah, I, I understand, yeah. As long as we can do that, sure, I, I, I think Felix made a good point. My comment would be that this is so restrictive. There's only one or two areas that, actually, the town, that you're not gonna get. Your, your concern is not gonna be, uh, coming to a situation or a problem around residential places. There are only two reasons.
Yes, you can step up to the, uh.
I just got three quick things.
You are?
So, Gladys. Peter Calhoun, sixties, for the resident of a former councilman, and I am a active member of the West Warwick zoning board. Which this particular application in the past half comes before the zoning board within the last, uh, two days or so. Couple of things I just wanna mention. A lot of the manufacturers have designed these towers to actually, uh, break halfway down. So they're going to tell you that the fall zone isn't as pliable as we think it might be for us. Second, uh, within the last year, year and a half, in fact, I was there yesterday, Saltie Bryant Beach. That's not, wasn't a big tower up there, but that collapsed, it, it's retired.
If I might, Peter, Mark just showed me the picture, and I don't know whether it makes any difference. That was a lattice-type tower. This ordinance provides only monocoque. And I don't know whether or not it makes any difference.
I don't know what kind of tower.
It was a lattice tower.
Yeah.
It was a lattice, yeah.
One other thing. Two other things, from a standpoint of, uh, protocol or consideration, proper consideration. I didn't hear in the recommendations out, did you include anything or make a, uh, a recommendation? Or consideration of what is allowed, you know, or not allowed by the airport and the.
Oh, yeah, FAA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, that's, that's, yes, yeah.
The last tower in West Warwick was fifteen feet lower than the maximum height allowed. By the airport and the fly zone, so far away from the airport and so forth. Actually, I have two more things, a very quick. Some parts of, I, I've read somewhere in the United States, I'm not sure where, because I've, I've been away for a while. But I do know specifically, in Paris, France, one of the biggest considerations. Was that we've never really considered here in West Warwick, I'm not sure Rhode Island, is the problem it's generated. For radar, for the airplane itself. Now, I haven't looked into it, but if it ever comes our way again, that this is going to be something that we consider. Uh, we need to look into that. Last, last and not, last, last least. West Warwick owns three wind towers. We own them, we get energy from it, it goes into the grid, we get financial credit for them. Everyone knows that they're not located in West Warwick. There's a very specific reason why they're not located in West Warwick. There is no room for these towers. There's not room for one of them, never mind three of them.
It's Peter. Uh, Peter, I, somewhere in here. Well, I know, I know FAA is in there and.
It's getting certificate, right approval.
Yeah, I'm, I, but, I don't know if it's radar, but it's, it's signals and that kind.
We talked about transmission, radio transmission.
Yeah. So as long as, as long as it's still on the planning board, I don't have any worries.
Yeah.
Yeah, proposed changes, I, I can't pick it out, but it's in there. Anyway, I'm asking the board to give me a favorable recommendation to go before the council tomorrow night.
So if, so.
One, one other thing, the, one last thing, that what I've done is, the wind ordinance that was in place, get rid of it.
Yeah.
This wind ordinance goes in place, and the green ordinance that led to the conflict remains in place. But there's a provision in here that says excluding anything for the wind. So wind is removed from the green ordinance. The green ordinance for solar power and everything else stays as is, and there is just the separate ordinance for wind. There'll be no more conflict.
So, so Al, um, when you were talking to this guy, I know you mentioned something about the, uh, you know, the maintenance, uh, you know, operation and maintenance plan. Now. How, how is that enforced, and how is, that is just something that basically puts the owner on the hook?
It has, it has to be submitted to the, to, and, and.
For the permit.
Yeah, and once a year, it has to be reviewed by the building office.
Once a year, okay, so it does be reviewed, so it's something he has to fill out and show proof that he's been maintaining it properly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you got it covered here, Alan's second fire seventeen-one, where, uh, purpose. It says, this regulation is established both in the manner to be consistent with applicable federal and state laws and regulations. And to facilitate the most harmonious relationship possible between the alternative energy and the visual environment residents of West Warwick. However, any provision of this section that is found to be in conflict with any federal or state law or regulation. It is the federal and state law and regulation that will be controlling.
Yeah.
So if there is a radar situation, that the federal.
Yeah.
So, this thing has been advertised. And I understand what that means, but my concern is, and, and I have seen. I've seen manufacturer's safety guidelines, because I've done a lot of reading on this, and. How can we deal with this where we go, we come back, we, we come back again with another document? I, I don't wanna see the town allow the installation with a.
Felix, I, I'm the one who prepares the ordinances. If this gets passed, I will give you my word that the council will get an amendment.
The only, the only, the only thing I'd like to make sure is that we don't allow, we don't allow someone, and Wade knows this, 'cause he's in the business. We don't allow someone to come in with a product that says, hey, if something goes wrong, you better run six-hundred feet away. In other words, the manufacturer is saying something that they need more space.
I understand what you're saying.
So I, I would just like to make sure that we are covered.
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
So it was greater. If you want me to go home tonight and produce those.
All, all I'm, all I'm, all I'm asking.
I have them on my laptop.
All I'm asking for, Felix.
You will.
Is, get, let me get this in place, and I will be the one.
If you, if you could just, if we could just cover ourselves from a safety standpoint, for insurance, and they're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I will, I will, I will put a, I just wanna get this in, because the monitor is coming up, and then I'll ju- that's.
I'll be more than happy to document, because I saw a couple of ones on the Cape where.
Yeah.
You know, it was, it was. It was kinda like interesting to see what they put in for safety guidelines.
If, if, if the council adopts this, I will be right back at him with an amendment to it.
Any. No. Sir, did you?
I'm here to listen right now. I'm trying, when you go behind the monitor, I'm out of hearing and reading your list.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't rea- I didn't realize it, I'm sorry. If you had said something, I would've stayed up.
So, I think af- I think after the last, uh, the last go-around with this stuff, we've indicated our concerns and. You know, if the board has any questions, if they'd like to see fifteen-hundred feet, twenty-five-hundred feet, a quarter of a mile, and whatever. I mean, there's all, I, I, Al is correct. They're all over the place nationwide, and they're in some states with very large parcels, whether it's farmland or whatever. So. What do you think?
Subtle comment.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're right, Felix, but I think that there's so many, there's, there's only so many spaces that it can go in, that, you know.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's restrictive.
As long as we have the amendment.
So I said, approved, as admitted?
Hang on, Pete's got something else.
I, just as a, uh, just to throw this out, as a.
Would you mind stepping up to the mic?
I wouldn't mind, Peter. As an afterthought, when town of West Warwick put those three massive cell towers in, uh, country.
Wind towers.
What did I say?
Cell towers.
Wind, wind towers, wind turbines. I was on the council when a different type of wind, wind tower, wind turbine, uh, from Germany was being considered. We want to put it on top of the, um, high school or city center. I volunteered to take a trip to, uh, Germany, but we don't have that.
What a nice guy.
But in the, in the meantime, I never thought that those turbines would be any problem in the middle of the woods.
Oh, they're a problem.
Look, what has transpired from that in the last two or three years.
With the people in the neighborhood.
In country, they're in, it's in the middle of the woods, and people are talking about flicker, they're talking about.
Noise.
And noise, eh?
Yeah, they're not the quietest, and you get a farm of them. It's just amplified. So from a, a lack of consideration, that we have a proprietary interest in a very controversial project. That's out of our, out of our town, and here we are discussing it again. Just want you to take a moment.
One, one of my cons.
Consideration.
One of my, one of my concerns, and because of the, the density of the town. I had said, maybe, just don't allow them. That was not, didn't receive a great, uh, reception, that, you know, that was. Well, there may be some that work well, you know, an individual, what have you. So I, I had, number one. So I, I had, number one, that problem, and the other reason I didn't go there was I have a serious concern that to prohibit, uh, prohibit any within the town, because of the big push by the state on a state level for this type of energy production, I tend to think that if somebody challenged it, it would cost the town a lot of money to defend and lose. So.
Plus, plus they might come up with some that are, that are lots, and smaller scale, down the road.
Yeah, and, and in addition, and in addition, I think that John covered it by adding CE, so I think we've given you the opportunity, we've given you, we got very strict standards, yes, they're very strict standards, but what Peter just said, they go up and there's noise, askily, there's noise. So I, 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 I'm, I'm happy with, with, I don't mean with, I'm happy with what I did.
But when there's. When you, when you see the, when you see those newspaper articles and the comments from the residents in Coventry, did we give any consideration to the comments in those articles?
Here?
Have we looked at them?
Yeah. Yeah, I, that's, I, I, there's a whole, there's a whole, uh, whole section in there, what they gotta submit on, on noise.
Noise, there's a noise section, yeah.
No, I think, uh, you saying, did the town respond to the Coventry and West Greenwich residents, West Orange?
Well, I mean, no, I think, I think as far as, they had, they had complaints on flicker. Weren't some of those homes or some of those structures well over a thousand feet away?
I'm twenty-five hundred feet away, and I can hear them.
So.
If y'all haven't been out there, you should take a ride, it's right on.
Yes, it is, it's in here. The ambient noise level by, by ordinance in this town is forty decibels, and it's at X number of feet. That's what we, we've got in this town. They have to, if they're coming in and say, I wanna put a tower up, they gotta bring the expertise in to show that it's not gonna violate that. They've gotta bring in the, the person who says that within this certain area, they're not gonna be bothered by flicker. I mean, I've done all of those things that the people are complaining about.
But they're, but they're a lot further away, they're, they're, their distance is quite a bit further away, and they're being impacted.
I, I understand, Phil, in all honesty, Felix, in order to eliminate all of those, you couldn't have it in this town, couldn't have one in this town.
Noise dissipates over distance. So if the West Warwick ordinance has a not to exceed decibel level closer to the project, then the likelihood of their, it exceeding it further away from the project is nil, it can't. So if it's two hundred feet away from the boundary of the project, you can't exceed a certain decibel level. At three hundred feet, it's impossible to exceed it, 'cause it dissipates over distance.
And plus, there's only gonna be one, there would only, especially in the, the space that we have available, there might be one put up, wherein, in that, that case, there's several.
Yeah, there are.
That are creating all the sound, Felix, you know what I'm saying? There's all these concerns are magnified by the, by the, by the number.
Noise travels at a louder pace when there's no one going to set it.
What did I say, fifty decibels is the maximum allowed?
Yeah, it's quiet out there.
Fifty decibels is the maximum allowed?
What I, it's in, I know it's forty or fifty, whatever, we have an.
Not good from the property line.
We have an ordinance in the town that sets the level, and I just took that ordinance and put it in.
Okay.
That, that, that's already in, in our code, that the, uh, for example, that's what the, the police officers would enforce if they had a music or, you know, that, that's set in our code, and I just put that in for, for this.
So the issue is, do we have enough distance? That's the issue.
I'm very happy where you, where you wrote. Anything that you may wanna change can be amended, we wanna get this in as soon as possible, that is the comment, that's the goal.
Yeah, at least it's in place.
This is to get this in place. Anything that may want you to be suggested amended, today, today, we should get this in place.
And, 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 and listen, whether it came from you or Peter, uh, sees it on, Peter sees it on the zoning board, uh, that after they've studied it, that somebody says to me, I recommend you make this change. Uh, John, Councilman D'Amico has been the real big push on this, and I can tell you right now that I don't have any doubt that if I went to Councilman D'Amico and said, John, I want the okay to come forward with this amendment, his attitude is, put it up and let's have a discussion on it. So I, you know, I'm open to any, any suggestions that come along. My concern right now is I wanna get this in place, because December thirty first is gonna be here pretty soon.
Okay. Hey, so, I'm all set, I make a motion to approve the ordinance as written by, uh, our solicitor. Motion is made by Joe Godozic. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Wayne Miller.
You don't need a world-class voice.
Now, how do, now, how do we, now, how do we, uh, how do, how do we cover Mr. DeFury's commitment to my request that if the manufacturer's safety standards exceed our distance, how do we do this?
You, you bug, you bug Mr. DeFury until he gets a.
Do, do, do we put it in the motion?
I would say not at this point.
Or is this, or is this what we call a gentleman's agreement?
We know what happens with them.
All right, well, you know.
If I, if I may make a suggestion, I, I think that is not a rhetorical question, but a question that you wanna answer. I have a suggestion to your question, you may wanna put some cheeky little language, I said cheeky. The, the town of West Warwick also must stay up to date and in the presence of any and all new considerations that may be presented by the federal agency.
That's in there, that's in there.
It's in there.
He has it in there, the question is the manufacturer's safety guidelines.
Felix, I give you my word.
Okay.
I'll put an ordinance together.
Fine.
It's, it's like.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Good job, Al. Chuck, sir, would you like?
Yeah.
Do you have anything you'd like to say? Public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
No public comment, any other questions on the board? Hurricane Maria is now category five, is a bears down on Puerto Rico.
Make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion or adjourn?
I second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Emotion?